It is 9:01. For December the 11th. Call to order, the Delaware County Council meeting. And we will be led to say the pledge allegiance to the flag by Councilman Matchit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has the agenda been posted? Roll call please. Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
President.
Ms. Lassiter.
Chair.
Ms. Matchit.
Ms. Quakembusch.
Here.
Ms. Quakeenbusch.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Okay, now we will have the approval of the agenda as posted. All in favor say aye. All in the same side. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Jessica. Roll call. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakeenbusch. Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the transfer agenda. And the first one up is Circuit Court. And I believe Ms. Patterson is going to cover that.
Circuit Court, 197 part-time minus $1,080, 441 office equipment, minus $1,080, total request zero.
Move to approve. Move by Larry. Second by Jessica. Roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Clerk 102 Chief Deputy plus $2,0787.75, 113 Deputy Clerk BMV minus $2,0787.75, total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Jessica.
Second.
Chris, second. I looked this up, and the way I understand this, this is days earned, like sick days and such, for the Chief Deputy in the Clerk's office. And there was a little bit of a question about whether vacation pay could be paid. And it's on page 63 of the manual. It says in one paragraph, vacation leave shall be taken into account of your earned and shall not be carried over from one year to another, except where vacation can be denied. So the question was, would this person have time to take these days yet this year? Or should we compensate? Because the next paragraph says an employee is entitled vacation compensation at his or current pay rate for an unused vacation leave at the time of separation or retirement. So I just point that out before you vote. If anybody has a question on that, mine if not, this is sick days and vacation pay. Any question? Roll call. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes, and I used to run into that a lot with DOMA at the end of the year. There were times that DOMA could not get off or any girl, Gail couldn't get all their vacation days in, so we rolled it over, so definitely.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Emergency Medical Service, C-112 minus $2,0165, D-140 plus $2,0165, B-106 minus $776, D-140 plus $776, total request zero.
Move to approve. Okay. I don't see Jason here.
It looks like these are just transfers from C to a D, and then, I'm not sure why, it's a B to a D.
Well...
Gail.
All these are different.
They all go, they both go to Ds. Ds plus twice.
Gail, didn't she have a problem with the last transfer that she did into Ds and they weren't? You didn't have enough money or something?
I don't really remember. I can't recall.
I'm thinking that because these were on the agenda, I think, last month, too. For some reason, I'm thinking when Gail went to do it, there wasn't enough to transfer, so she had to do it again, or some different ones or something. I think, I want sort of that, but I think.
Well, it's different.
You want to try and get a hold of that?
You're going to be looking it up?
What was Donna?
Yeah, for some reason, I'm thinking it was on their last one, but I could be wrong. They've had a lot of transfers here lately. Gail's had some problems with them having it, so...
She did send me correct the IP ones, sort of along lines, so maybe that...
Yeah.
He does transfer.
He got behind these transfers, I know that.
These aren't transferred in the same position.
No, the new money is.
Oh, I thought you were showing the last one.
Deposits are both to D-120. It's like, it's like D-140 is short.
Right, and I think she had D-140 on there before, but there wasn't enough money from the account that she wanted to transfer from.
Oh, okay.
And so Gail couldn't do the complete transfer. I'm thinking that.
She had to go someplace else.
Because I know she's had some problems with their transfers.
Okay.
Gail was struggling to...
Okay.
So I think this just cleaned all that up.
Okay, well, I hope that's the right explanation. Roll call please. Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Jail, 156 Correctional Officer, minus $64, B-105 Correctional Officer, plus $64, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Move by Jessica, second by Larry. Roll call. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Sheriff, 199 Holiday, minus $6,600, 197 overtime, plus $5,000, 194 sick pay, minus $12, A-133 Deputy, plus $12, 223 vehicle maintenance, plus $1,600, total request zero.
No different. Move by Larry.
Second.
Second by Chris.
What's the vehicle maintenance in this?
That was in Aggie Cox Sheriff's Department. That was last minute, Bill said he came in for vehicle maintenance when it was trying to come for the end of the year.
These are, these are already ones that have been maintained, I guess we should say.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Okay, these next four are from county general, are all 2019, so I need for you to approve, so we can have them there January 1st.
You want to just read them all and hold on all of them together?
Sure. Okay, Circuit Court, 142, minus $31,805, A-142, plus $31,805. Clerk, A-101 Clerk, minus $47,992.40, B-101 Clerk, plus $47,992.40. 102 Chief Deputy, minus $33,709.84, A-102 Chief Deputy, $33,709.84. County Council, 101 Council Member, minus $13,230, A-101, plus $13,230. Public Defender's Office, A-144 Office Staff, minus $30,073.15, B-144 Office Staff, plus $30,073.15, total request is zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Second by Jessica. Something comes to my mind here, in the position of clerk, does the stipend that's paid to the clerk for managing the voter registration come under salaries for elected official?
I think it's a different line item.
Well, I know it's a different line item.
It does, but that's going to come before you guys in January, because it's going to be a major transfer.
But we can't increase a public official's salary after the first of the year? By law, by statute?
I know. I don't think it'd be, you won't be increasing it because it's there.
We can't change it. The way the statute reads, you can't change it. It's not an increase, it's period, you can't change it, if I remember the statute right.
Is the stipend considered part of the salary though?
Yeah, it's paid through salary.
Compensation now.
Yes.
How is it paid? Is it a lump sum, or just?
Nope, it's, you get it very weekly.
Okay.
It's a paycheck.
The only thing we could do...
Could we transfer that today? Like we're doing the salary?
Yeah, I'd have to hurry up and figure it, because you have to leave eight days in the current position.
Well, we can do it in a little bit. We've got other things to do here.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up in case, because I always thought that was a neat statute before I didn't, because the way it was before that statute, people probably played funny games with somebody they didn't like. They cut their pay after they got to office, like that. I remember that in one of the schools I took years ago.
Or if they got beat in the primary.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I just wanted to address that.
I'll do it after we get done with this.
We have a motion to approve the four positions that change at the beginning of the year, as read. Roll call.
Can I ask a question, though?
Oh, sure.
That the salary for the Chief Deputy, it didn't have any longevity rolled into it?
Yes, but I didn't roll it over to the new person.
Okay.
That position, my two chief deputy, I only put the amount of the base pay minus the eight days that carried over, so in 102, at the end of the year next year, there'll be like, a few hundred dollars left in that account.
Is that a transfer within the government? Do we know who that person is?
If, outside...
I mean, I don't want the name.
No, the new, I was told the new person coming in is a new person.
New hire.
A new hire.
So they'll have the 90-day thing?
So they, well, I don't know.
Come in at 10 percent, come in at 90 percent, then.
The chief deputies due to?
No.
No, they don't?
I don't think chief deputies do.
You sure?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I guess it...
Oh, okay.
I've known when it has and I've known when it hasn't.
Well, I don't, I guess I'd go back and read the ordinance.
Their insurance begins January the 1st.
Well, I'm going to have to go read the ordinance, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
We'll check on it.
But that is just the base pay only in that new position.
I forgot to ask you that on the state, was that...
Yeah, because I checked with Rick to make sure it wasn't somebody moving from another office where we were going to have to worry about that.
That's why I asked the question.
And he said, no, it's a brand-new person.
Okay, so what?
Well, it's a new part-time, a person, it's a person that is working here part-time.
But they don't have any...
They do not have any of the benefits.
No.
No benefits. Okay.
I guess my feeling is, is they start with all of the benefits. Uh, the elected official, I guess I don't look at it, that is...
Well, I'll just take...
Where to start from, I can't break myself.
You need to pull that ordinance and not read it.
And what they've been here part-time for six months, that's why they don't, they don't do that 90-day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's probably the, so then this person has... I'm just trying to be by the book here, because I don't personally like to deviate from one to the other, because once you deviate, it's that precedent.
It's already happened.
Yeah, then the next person comes along. During papers, it's got stuff on the back of them, they confuse me. Okay, we're done with that page. Go ahead.
Okay.
Hold on a second, I got to do roll call.
Oh, we got to do roll call, excuse me, Stephen. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakeenbusch.
Yes.
Okay. Community Corrections, 107, plus 500, 109, plus 500, 128, 500, 131, 500, A-102, 500, A-116, 500, A-141, 500, A-144, 500. The next one should say B-115, 500. The next one should say 197, part-time, not Financial Secretary, 1,005.71, 143, minus $6,071, total request zero.
You want to just read the second one?
Yeah. 103, 500, 104, 500, 117, 500, 142, 500, A-127, 500, A-130, 500, B-108, 500, B-137, 500, A-140, minus $4,000.
Need to approve? Scott? Second. Second by Larry. Any comments, questions? I have one. Just for the record, I know what this is, I talked with Scott about it. It was originally turned in for the 1,000 that we gave the employees for 2019. He went back to the board and they reduced it to 500, since they're on a fiscal year rather than annual year, so they'll be back with their second half of 2019 for the additional 500. But my comment is, is that from time to time, the Community Corrections Board comes to us for increases in salaries. And the Corrections Board has approved them, and they kind of put the thumb on us to just rubber stamp that. And now then, the county employees are given $500 every six months, or a thousand a year. The Community Corrections thinks they ought to get that also. I have a little problem with that, and I would hope that you would refer back to your board, that if your employees and your board think they should be treated as county employees, it should be across the board, and not just when they feel like giving them additional raise. And I know that's a 20-some member board you have over there, so I just want to relay that message, I have it in the record. Roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Did you say yes, Jane?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch. Yes. And I apologize to you, because I know you're new on the job, but you're the only connection we have right now.
Okay, I've got the new, oh.
Elizabeth Bad, D U C C D. Actually, at the last meeting, Ron, Jane discussed that with the board and things are going to be handled differently now.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thanks for saying that.
Okay, I've got the new figures for you.
Okay.
This would be voter's registration. It's Chief Registration Officer, 105, would be minus $5,218.34. Into A-105 would be plus $5,218.34. That leaves eight days in the current.
For this?
For the, for the eight-day...
2018 thing?
For the, yeah, for the eight-day carryover.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that. Second. And Scott? Jessica, second. Any other questions? Roll call please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakeenbusch.
I might have to pick your own motion.
All right. Motion to approve transfers and amend the salary ordinance with late reductions.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica.
Just a question on that. We changed that before, on Community Corrections, we changed that before, so we don't need to make that as amended, right?
I read it in the correct way.
We read it in the correct way. Okay. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Started to say something at the time and forgot to say. That's called. Short memory. Roll call on the famous motion. Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakeenbusch. Okay, we're going to move on to tax abatements. We've been invited to Bunsey Ticket, I believe is the name of the place.
Indiana Ticket.
To look at some equipment that they're going to apply for tax abatement on. Scott here, on that committee, you have anything?
I am going to that, I let Brad know I was going to go. I haven't seen anything on it, I think he's having this meeting prior to the introduction of any tax abatement on it. He wants us to see it before we go out there and get an idea of maybe what our feelings are. I don't know if you have any feelings I can pass on, or if you guys want to do anything.
I'm going to go to it.
Okay.
2018, isn't it?
Yeah, I think nine, nine or 9:30, one or two, check your email.
Did you get something on that, Larry?
Yeah.
Okay, Larry.
Everybody here.
Okay, very good.
And I know Charlie's going, Charlie Richmond, because he's on the abatement board.
Right. Appointments. I've been asked by a couple of council members about when we're going to do the appointments for next year. Took it upon myself and talked with Jessica and Scott to prepare a list of appointments for next year for boards that are held by, not by council members, but by people outside the government. And I have ran copies, but first, I want to note, does the council want to consider this at this time?
I think for some, in my opinion, is some of these boards are going to meet prior to a meeting, so it may be better off for us to get them appointed, so they can get, some of them may need to be sworn in, and things like that for different boards, so to give them an opportunity to attend that first meeting in January on the board appointments, I think I would like to see if we couldn't approve those, but...
Okay. Any objections to that? This list includes several carryovers. There's a change in the tourism, there's a change in the housing authority, there's a change in the redevelopment commission, and there's a change in the Board of Appeals. The rest are the same as they were. All of these folks have been contacted by either myself, or Scott, or Jessica, and they all agreed. I had a nice conversation with Patricia Mitchell, Mary helped me out on that one a little bit. I got, she, I finally got the call back to her, Mary, you were right in what the situation was. She's a very nice lady and appreciates very much being a part of that board. She did take her husband's place when he no longer could do it. So we don't know her, but I invited her to come to a meeting and get acquainted, so she may try that, too, when I send, let her out, if these appointments are approved. There's a duplication on one person, Board of Appeals, Mr. Simmons reluctantly took the job last year. Carrie Wiggerley asked if he might be appointed to this. I talked to Mr. Hughes about it, and he gave me a document here from his office saying that it's not a, it's a possibility that he can do both boards, as long as he doesn't receive compensation of any type from the redevelopment commission, because the Pina Boa board does have compensation. I have that document, I'll give that to Denise for the record.
And then did you get my email that Larry Brandon wanted to serve on that board?
What board?
The...
No, I did not.
You should have.
Well, I didn't.
Because, I'll have to...
Well...
I'll send it.
I've already talked to Carrie, and I guess...
Because James came down and, I thought James sent it, too.
I don't recall it, I'm sorry.
You say you did, you sent that to the commissioners also? Denise, sir?
No.
Oh, I think you sent...
Counsel.
Hey, you're just talking about the Board of Appeals.
Pina Boa board, yeah.
Say anything.
Well, and I'll just follow this up. Jane Carmichael called me and asked us to consider that. He liked him working on that board. So that's kind of was part of the influence also.
Don't we have two on the fair board? Don't we have Ted and Tom Isom? Why am I thinking that? Anybody help me here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you talked to Ted, and Ted doesn't want to do it?
I haven't talked to Ted, you know he wants to, I will, but the fair boards don't start up this year. Ted's, Ted's is annual. The fair board ones are up the end of 19.
Okay, so why, I guess I don't understand what Ted's is.
Ted's is a vote of respect for his long-term membership on the council, in my opinion, that he just likes to stay involved, and the council's chosen to put him on there as ex officio, kind of like we did John Wright. You remember?
Well, John was a voting member.
Oh, I know, but it was still, still more traditional, but if you don't want to put Ted on there...
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying at all, like I did, pinched my head off.
Well, that's the explanation I give, Jenny, I did. Ted and I have become friends, and we talk to each other about once a year, and I just honestly didn't take the time to call him, because to call Ted, you have to call, you have to leave work.
On a pager.
Well, or a pager, or his home phone, and then he calls you back, and...
Isn't he supposed to be like a liaison for the council, too, if the council has any questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he does that.
Yeah.
He calls me and fills me in once in a while.[1742.14]
Could we, could we have him as a liaison and then have another appointment for the, for the, could we make him just a special liaison and then appoint two people to the fair board?
We have two people, Keesling and Isom. His own.
They're not up yet.
They're not up this year. Teddy's kinda just a extra. He is a liaison. He considers himself. He calls me. And he can write all thirty minutes. But he calls you. He called me about the annual get-together and I talked with Jane.
Well, somebody has indicated to me they would like to be on there, and I know this is not gonna happen with us, but.
Well, if it happens next year, you'll have two appointments.
Well, those are two good ones. We don't wanna lose those two either.
Well, that's, that's, uh, up to the commissioners as to who gets what appointments, not us. We didn't have any for a long time, remember? Well, maybe you were, yeah, you were at the meetings. You weren't on the council, but. But early on, when they formed this new fair board, the council had nothing, uh, no, no appointments. And we were kinda pickered around a while about that, and others. Okay?
I'm still gonna work on the other one.
So do I have a motion to approve these appointments as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Any more discussion? Roll call? You need some?
The, on the tourism, one of them is the hotelier, right?
Oh, oh, I was gonna bring that up. Uh, I have a thing here. This is someone Jessica knows, that the, uh, Jared Owen is, yes, the hotelier.
Okay.
And I've talked to him personally. He's, he wants to serve again. Jared Walls is someone that Jessica knows. And his working experience is special miss, membership director of Delaware Country Club, aquatics director of the YMCA in Dayton, Ohio, lifeguard instructor YMCA Muncie, Ironman Swim Course captain Muncie, lifeguard instructor American Red Course Cross, head lifeguard manager on duty YMCA, and assistant swim coach Delta High School. And he is also, uh, currently the sales team manager at Hampton Inn and Suites in Muncie.
Sales.
Got some good qualifications. Okay?
Okay.
Sorry, I meant to bring that up. I think I pointed that out. 'Cause that's one of the changes.
Okay, and that, do you mind telling me who was on there prior to, or did you rather not?
Uh.
Who were, who were changing? Is Bill?
Bill Summers. And I'll see, other council members are concerned about the direction that board has been going there for a while. That's the reason for a bit of a change.
And you will be notified, right? Bill?
I don't know. I, I don't know that I've ever sent letters. If I send letters to tell them they're gone, Denise says.
Yeah.
Do we, do we do? Do I have to do that?
I hate it when they show up at a meeting and they're over on that board.
It's like they do send them a letter that says they're not being appointed by another term.
I know. So who is it? Bill Summers?
Yeah. Denise helped me with that. We'll do that. We'll have to send letters to these other folks.
And thank you them for their service.
Yeah, yeah, we, she's gonna thank you. And on the, on the appointments, I've kinda decided after talking to some of these folks that I'm gonna include in their appointment letter the fact that they're invited to come to a meeting on the fourth Tuesday sometime during the year and give us a little report.
We do that every year and they.
I know, but I haven't really put it in the letter, have I? So I just usually do that verbally. And they don't usually come, but, you know.
We'll invite them.
We'll try to get them. Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes. Jane won't be here until early January. Scott has asked me if we would wanna consider election of officers for next year. I talked to Mr. Hughes about it. What, he tells?
The council can do that at any time.
His comment to me was, and if the new council didn't like what was done, they could change it. So if you wanna elect officers today, we can do that.
I'm, I'm either way, or we can wait until our first meeting in January to do that. I don't know if there's a rush to. However, you guys wanna do it, I don't.
I'm good either way.
I have an issue.
Well, the other thing I have on the agenda is to set the date for the 2019 reorganization.
Well, I think we could probably do that at our regular meeting if we want.
Hmm?
We can probably do that at our regular meeting in January if we want. That's up to you. I don't think so.
Hmm?
Do a regular meeting in January?
Okay. So you wanna make a motion?
Do we need, do we need one, or just put it on the agenda?
Well, I think that's, I personally, what do you think, Mr. Hughes? You're a parliamentarian.
I, I think it would be better to set the actual date for reorganization.
I will make that motion to set the reorganization date at our first meeting in January, that date being the.
January twenty-two, twenty-second. January twenty-second.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes. Now, I have a question of Mr. Hughes. Since I was elected to be president this, this year, 2018, does, uh, Mr. Kreekcraft, is he responsible from January first to the twenty-second, not not?
Yes. Yes.
I would suspect you remain in office until your successor is elected.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to.
Oh, okay.
Get Steve to write all his letters.
Make a dream of mine. Well, I think that last vote asked you to basically be the president until the reorganization meeting at the end of January.
Since you were re-elected, yeah.
Fair enough. Somewhere in this pile of papers.
Now, Steve will probably run the election though, won't you?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The commissioners in county.
Okay, well, that, the. To be quite honest with you, these appointments that I presented are not all-inclusive. Here's all of the appointments on these pages here. And most of the others that we haven't done are council members who serve on different boards and such. So it, it makes it a little awkward as outgoing president to put this together. And I, somebody needs to know what each council member wants to continue to serve on.
I would like to continue tourism.
So, all I'm saying is that if anybody wants to change what you're doing, based on these comments that I'm gonna be president till the twenty-second, for sure, let me know, and I'll go ahead and prepare. Denise will help me do that. We'll put together a whole new thing like this with the council names in place. Okay? So if you want, don't wanna serve on something, you have to let me know, otherwise you're gonna serve on it like you are now. Is that fair enough?
We wanna reach out to Ryan as well.
Well, we will, and, and Chris has some spots in here. We'll just see if Ryan wants to fill that. I'll miss Chris a lot, you know? We also need to approve, uh, the, uh, 2019 council meeting agenda.
I'll move for approval as presented.
Second.
Moved by Larry. Everybody read it? Second by Jessica. Think Denise has kinda rehatched this. I hope.
Donna's prepared to review it.
It is, we'll let you know. Roll call, please. Do you have a question on it, Denise?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes, I do want to, uh, make it a little more formal than just as a part of the appointments. Mr. Hughes would like to say the word his name was included in this list. He has agreed, uh, verbally. Tell him what you told me. Well, you told me you enjoyed it. It'd be an honor to serve on the board. That is, that is true. I appreciate the opportunity, and I do enjoy working with the council and, and all the government entities we work with.
I appreciate his work. Re-mailing, he gets right back to us. We'll have to wait.
Seventy took a Friday off recently and he forgot to clear it with me. And I happened to need him on that Friday for something. I got through it, okay, but I was clear down on the floor, and I needed an answer.
Ron, can we go ahead and appoint, uh, Mr. Hughes as a attorney?
Well, you did.
We did.
You did. I have it on that list.
Oh, all right, good. I was gonna say, let's do that.
But I wanted to bring that out specifically so that you would know.
Yeah, yes, he's right there.
To address the, snuck right by me.
I need to ask something one at a time.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
It's gone, answer it.
Come, uh, January first, we'll have a lot of changes in payroll. And I know the sheriff and jail, you've already given the auditor's authority to make those changes and then come before you at the next meeting. Uh, but we have some, we have some more changes that's gonna take place as of January first. And I put on the agenda today what I, what I knew I could, which you guys approved, but can we have your blessing to go ahead and make those changes so those positions can be there January first when we know them? Otherwise, I, we'll have to tell those departments.
Uh, you wanna help us on a motion on that, Mr. Hughes?
Like, like, my best example to use is, we know we're gonna have a new human resource director January first. If you don't give the auditor's office the blessing, go ahead and make those transfers and then bring it before canceled after January meeting, we, they can't hire our human resource. And I know there's gonna be other departments that's gonna have some changes. I know the clerk's office is gonna have some changes, movement, some people, uh, fill in some new positions that are empty, currently empty.
The what?
Huh?
The post office? Clerk's office.
I don't know about post office.
Oh, you misheard it, Donna. It probably will too, Donna.
Yeah, they might too.
I misunderstood.
But there're just gonna be a few like that that I know we're gonna have to change so we can get them on that first payroll. And then we'll keep track of them and bring them before you, um, at the January twenty-sixth, second meeting to get official approval, but I ask you this every year, and.
But the DLGF doesn't like that.
They don't care. They don't know.
No, I mean, they don't like it because all those transfers in the early part of the year.
They don't know those.
I know. Oh, that's right, those are the transfers.
Yeah, they don't know about transfers.
Appropriation.
Right.
You're right, I'm wrong.
They only know if it's a major.
I have a question. Is HR person coming in at ninety percent?
Or who it is.
You have to ask HR, yes.
They won't, if they, not within the, if they've worked for the county for six months even part-time. I believe that ordinance says that that is waived. And so if another full-time person comes, obviously, it's waived.
So a, the chief deputy then coming in, in the clerk's office is going to be made at a hundred percent?
If they've been here over six months, according to the ordinance, or what the council directs us to do.
I guess the question on that would be that, are they gonna be paid out in time to start first of the year?
They, they don't have no choice. The office holder has the right to have a chief deputy. You can't let their time run into next year if they're being replaced. I mean, obviously, they were first if they stayed, and they were bringing somebody different, and when they want to stay within the office, they would be demoted. So there's always a spot, but the chief deputy spot, the office holder has the authority to fill that. Almost every department has a chief deputy, and it's by statute, so.
Okay.
I just wanna be consistent.
Well, I agree with you a hundred, ten percent.
But we haven't always been.
The only thing was, though, is just like with the chief deputy for the clerk. We don't know who it is, so we don't know if somebody with six months, somebody with three months, another full-time person. So we don't know until, I mean, what Donna's asking is that you guys give us the authority to take care of what's taken care of, and it'll take care of what needs to be done, and then we'll get everything approved in January. That way the payroll continues to get paid. 'Cause eight days from this year, go on the first check anyway, so most of those people get eight-day checks.
Well, I, I am correct, aren't I, Pam, that when the first deputy comes in January first, they're covered with insurance, life insurance. So it's really unfair to cut their.
And really, the chief deputy really is your office holder's replacement. If the office holder's not there at train, your chief deputy is that office holder, so it's a little bit different.
We all understand that.
Are you, are we looking for a, a motion on that, I guess, or?
Yeah.
Are we?
Yeah, I was asking, Mr. Hughes, if there was a way we shouldn't rule that. It's granting authority to the, to the auditor to, uh, be transferred to cover those individuals appointed or hired or appointed, uh, prior to the next meeting, and then for, you'll ratify those at the next meeting, the January twenty-second meeting.
Do you, do you have that as a motion?
Yeah, I wrote it down once.
You already did, yeah, okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve that as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, can you read what you got there, just so we understand that?
You grant authority to the auditor's office to take care of any transfers from new hires or, um, anybody that's being promoted or done until your January twenty-second meeting.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes. You know, I'm beginning to get a little better doing two things at a time here. Um, Denise. Ms. Denise, I need to change my vote on the minutes for the November meeting to abstain.
Okay.
'Cause I have more here. I wanna thank Scott for pinch hitting for me the November meeting.
Record time.
Nope, no problem. I had to dial Larry twice, but I almost, I almost had to take him out.
He forgot her name, Ron.
Well, it was right, he was consistent, yeah.
Must be the chair, huh?
And, uh, I just decided I'd missed a meeting for a long time. As you all know, we, well, my wife went through a very, very tough time this year, and just decided it was time to just get away. Top it off, a fellow named Michael came through the area where I grew in Florida, called a hurricane. He can't believe what it's like. It's awful. We drove down there two days after the hurricane, stayed twenty-four hours in LA. It was devastating. And then when we went down in November, we had two huge truckloads of debris and stuff in our yard plus three big trees. One tree came down on its own tree, that big diameter, broke off 10 feet up and blocked over a big tall pine tree. So, but I was very fortunate because there's people along there and very near us that all they have now is a shelf. You can see right through the houses where the wind and water went right through. And Mexico Beach is worse, but I didn't drive up there to look, but that's only 20 miles away. And the hurricane was so fierce that Dopeville, Alabama is about 150 miles from the coast. The neighborhood without power in that town. The little town we lived near had two filling stations. They're both gone. The Burger King is gone. It's just blown away right on the highway. So it was an opportunity to really appreciate what we have right here in Delaware County, Indiana. And also for my wife and I to kind of catch up on our stress. Although I did bother Mr. Hughes a bit and talk to Scott a bit and Jessica and Jane. We kept, kept going here. I appreciate everybody's help. With that, anybody else on the council want to say?
I'd like to say thanks to all of you for everything you've done for me through the years. Mary's and Ron, Mary and Ron both, I've since 2007, I consider my mentors, helped me with a lot of, I felt like I had a lot of silly questions, especially the first couple of years, you don't have a clue. And you think, man, what did I get myself into? And once you learn everything, Donna, thank you, she helped me understand how the DLGF operates and how our levies calculated, things like that, how our tax caps come into play and all that process. Appreciate that. It's sometimes hard to get a grasp on, but after a third or fourth year, so you learn all that, it's kind of like a game of golf. You start to enjoy it, so. I've enjoyed the bunch. I've always felt like, you know, my priority's been to represent the people, represent my constituents, and, but secondly, represent the employees. And I think I've done a good job of that. I think I'm leaving the council at a good point, we're in good financial shape. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
Really am thankful. What an experience. Thank you all.
Well, Chris, I was, I wanted to let you say something first, but not only have I been a mentor to Chris, but I've learned from Chris. He's my mentor also, and he's my friend. As well as all of you are, but he was a new friend. I didn't know Chris until he came on the council. Had no life experience with him whatsoever. And he's just a good guy, and I know this is not politically correct, but I've already encouraged Chris to run in two years at the large seat. And I, you know, when you get real down political, that's not the right thing to do, but that's what I feel. And I'd probably vote for Chris if he ran. He's a good guy. He really is. And he's sincere in what he does and and we're going to miss you, Chris. We're going to miss you a lot. And you are so right. You started the ball. James Kennedy really had to begin the effort by riffing 20-some people. But Chris followed through and I followed his lead. The county fiscally is in a lot better shape than it was 10 years ago. Our latest report on insurance, and this is a commendation to the commissioner because they've changed insurance program, but the insurance program is now solvent probably at the end of the year by close to between $400,000 and $500,000 operating balance for health care. And that's excellent. That's where it should be. That's where it should stay. And our operating balance should stay there. And I know that it's a tough subject to talk about, but I think every council member here, including Mr. Matchit, has been due diligent and Kim and I on this new jail project, we'll call it, Justice Center project, to make sure that that project does not put overbearing load on the county general fund. That it's going to have to operate under its own budget as it is now or it's going to be awful tough to, for us to consider it because there's been too much work and too much sacrifice on the part of county employees through the times when we work four days a week and all those kind of things. A lot of people don't feel that as it's felt inside the operation. But it's not easy when the funds are not increasing a bunch. And with that...
I think a lot of our, a lot of the credit on our insurance goes to our employees for using the clinic. I don't know if anybody has used the new doctor or not, but I like him very much. And so, gosh, I would just encourage anybody, and it's obvious we have been using him class.
Wonderful. Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not above by Chris or Gary.
I want to go to the holiday party, Christmas party.
Anyway.
Why?
Melanie and I had the pleasure last week of meeting with the vice president. And he all sends Christmas greetings to everybody. But we also met with a, what was his name?
Give me a better hint.
You know what's his name.
Homeland Security.
John Hill.
Oh, John. He's from Selma.
And he's from Selma.
Nice, nice guy.
Nice, nice guy.
Across the street from it.
That's what he told us. Yes.
What's, what's he? He with Pence?
He was with Pence, but he is with Homeland Security now.
He came back to Indiana when Pence was governor to be his Homeland Security officer. He retired from the Indiana State Police. He was a major there.
For 22 years.
Yes, served a long time. His mom and dad were the pastors there at the church there at Locktamar House.
And it was so nice to meet somebody from Indiana that Mike has taken with him and that has represented Indiana so well. I guess we got to sit at Mike's desk and it was just a...
Ron, didn't you get to go to the funeral?
No. He had left. He hadn't gone back. Matter of fact, we didn't know if we would get to see Mike or not because we didn't know whether he was going to Houston. Mike did not go to Houston. But meeting John Hill was just really one of the high points of my trip because I just thought he was...
Super, super nice guy.
Yeah, I hate to bring him back up, but I want you to thank Larry. I'm just trying to think of everything. But Larry, we worked together too. When he was commissioner, he started with me in '06, right? We campaigned together.
Well, we campaigned our first.
He stuck with me through thick and thin. We've been through some crazy stuff, ups and downs. I remember when a guy come in here, had pockets stuffed full of teabags he was going to throw at us. We've been here. I appreciate Larry and, and actually Jessica, Larry, Scott, any of you three decide to run for mayor or state senator or something, give me a call. I'd be glad to show up when you're fundraising. On the friendship side, if you need anything, give me a call.
Same thing.
I'll be there.
We need to go on a bike ride.
We do.
When the weather gets a little better, I think I'll go.
Then we do a fundraiser.
Yes, I thought. I have a moment.
Well, now, now I'll tell you, the, the person that I am going to be loving for all the fair board, and I would hope anybody else would too, that would have, have any influence.
I am.
Is Chris. Chris grew up in a, in a carnival family.
Parents of the fair, yeah.
Chris has a, has a real interest in serving at the fairgrounds and I would love to see him there. So if anybody has...
Well, the commissioners have a bunch of appointments and maybe some...
I've talked to commissioners. They're going to let me know. I haven't called Mark yet, but...
Got cotton candy and tea, huh?
I could still probably put together a parish little merry-go-round.
Is that right? I went to school back at McKellen Junior High with a fellow that followed it. Do you know the Z-bells?
Yeah. Poor Jack. Jack Bolander.
Well, it wasn't you nor...
The Z-bells.
Yeah.
Yes.
The mother of that much is the guy I went to school with and that would have been in 1952.
Yeah, I didn't know him then.
I can't remember his person.
How old were you when you left the carnival business?
17, between 17 and 18.
How many times have you been to Vegas?
Never spent a summer at home. We would travel all summer long, so I never home. Missed some school too back then. They would, I'd miss like 30 days of school. We came back late.
How many times you been to Vegas? 33 times?
Gee, where is that?
No, because that's, he loves Vegas and...
He goes because he gets company bonuses.
He's not allowed to talk about that, though.
Well, Gail, we'll miss you. Yes, we will.
Best of luck, Gail.
Kind of funny not to have you around. Helps out. A little different.
My uncle Becky.
Becky will fill with shoes, I hope.
My first day in this building, Gail, was...
Okay.
It's lucky to have her.
Yeah. But good luck to you on your new adventures. Anyone else want to reminisce a little or thank somebody? Going to be a new year. We're not going to meet down on January 22nd, correct? They're going for it. I can't go right away, though. My wife's got plans here. Okay.
Have a good holidays.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Auditor.
Yes.
Would you do me the honor?
Yes.
I haven't gotten my certificate thing yet. All day. Maybe I haven't.
You should come from the quarter.
I know that. Yeah. When are you going to do that?
Right now?
Well, hey, far. Well, we'll adjourn, man. Anybody opposed to adjourn?
Nope.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.